Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, in historic Old Central High School. It is 6:30, and Member Murneke, would you call role, please?
Member Harla.
Oops, sorry.
Member Harla. She's here. I'll wait. Member Johnston.
Here.
Member Luffler Kemp. She did not make it. Member Harla?
Here.
I'm here. Member Salika Punkle?
Here.
Member Welty?
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Ed Crawford. Nope. He's here somewhere. Deputy Clerk Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Melinda Tebow.
Mr. Tebow.
Secretary Sue Tellarico.
Here.
Members Jude, student representative Jude Gosens? Gosens.
Here.
And Tommy Olafson.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Member Murneke. And will everyone please rise and join in saying our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and...
All right. We're moving on to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Member Harla. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. May I have a vote on that? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. We're going to move to reading and approving the minutes. First one is the minutes of the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, April 21st. Could I have a motion approving those minutes, please?
So moved.
That's moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Harla. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of April 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And then we have minutes of the special school board meeting of Tuesday, May 12th. Could I have? That's been moved by Member Harla. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of those minutes of May 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously also. All right. And then we are going to move to school and community recognition. So if everyone would join us down, and Mr. Crawford?
Good evening, members of the board. This month, I'm pleased to present Doreen Ruhanen, Homecroft Elementary for recognition. Doreen is the recipient of the 2015 Gold Find, Gold Star Teacher Award. Menley and Lilian Goldfine established a fund for the Gold Star Teacher Award in 2006 through the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation to honor inspirational public school teachers for their dedication, skills, and hard work. Nine ISD 709 elementary school teachers were nominated for the award based on several criteria, including impact in the classroom, school, and community, and their effort to pursue professional development. Doreen was selected for the award by committee through a competitive application process. Doreen has taught in Duluth for 25 years and currently teaches first grade in Homecroft Elementary School. According to Homecroft principal, Cheryl Halt, students who entered Doreen's classroom quickly find themselves immersed in a world of wonder, movement, and development that keeps them on track and engaged in learning. Doreen has served on the ISD 709 Service Learning Committee, ISD 709 Reading Palette, and Assessment Committees, and has worked as a mentor training staff on curriculum. She has been involved with Kappa Delta Phi, an international honor society in education, and recently received the Cooperating Teacher Exemplary Service Award from the College of Saint Scholastica. She has served on Scholastica's Teacher Education Advisory Committee for over 10 years, recommended for the position by colleagues and peers. Volunteer activities include Second Harvest Food Bank, bell ringing for the Salvation Army, and a community breakfast with Santa event, among many others. Congratulations to Doreen and to all of its...
It was very fun to watch the awards last week and watch her face. Very neat, and that's what we remember is our staff really makes a difference in this school district. All right. We are now on audience, and if there's any... Okay, we have a number of people, and you will be limited to three minutes. Member Murneke is keeping track, and I just want to remind everyone to please be civil, be respectful, and no disruptive or bullying behavior, please. So I'm going to start out with Jeff Fink is first as a speaker.
My name is Jeff Funk. I live three houses away from the East High School and across the street from the teacher's parking lot. I have a question for the board. When was a school district going to tell us, those of us in the neighborhood, that there were lights going to be installed this summer in the teacher's parking lot? We just heard about this a week and a half ago and found out that the board has already approved this. You moved into our neighborhood; we didn't move into yours. I have a petition here, signed by all our neighbors, that these new lights will affect. I emailed a copy of this to school board member Judy. This is a very serious, this is very serious for those of us living next to the high school, just like the lights in the main parking lot that shine into our houses, our yards, and our neighborhood, and at all times of the day and night. We are very concerned about these new lights doing the same. An example, just this past Sunday, it was raining and cloudy all day long, and the lights in the main parking lot were on all day and all night. We don't want this to happen in the teacher's parking lot. You moved into our neighborhood; we didn't move into yours. The reasoning behind this is because of safety, so we were told. Well, if this was such a big of a safety issue, then why wasn't it done when it was initially installed, or why did it take three years for this to be done? You moved into our neighborhood; we didn't move into yours. Now you have probably promised the neighborhood that the lights will be put on timers or deflectors for the lights, but the fact is that there will always be lights across the street from our houses that weren't there before. The school board promised us vegetation barrier in the green space between the parking lot and the houses before it was even a high school, and that never happened. So we are very reluctant and concerned as to what the school district might do next. You moved into our neighborhood; we didn't move into yours. I will end with a comment about this parking and safety issue of the high school. There will be a meeting this Thursday at the high school about safety concerning, on concerns on 40th. When were the people of our neighborhood going to be told about this meeting? This is not just a student issue. This is a neighborhood issue, and we weren't invited. And you wonder why we are concerned when we are not even told what's going on into our neighborhood. Remember, you moved into our neighborhood; we didn't move into yours. Thank you.
Okay, could I have Benjamin Prunuski, I think it is?
Is it okay if I go first?
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
Hello. My name is Pat O'Connell, and I'm a representative of the Duluth Chargers, the lacrosse that recently got the recommendation from the Education Committee, and I'm just here to say thank you. Obviously, to the school board, to our Superintendent Gronseth, but to the greater Duluth Chargers and Nighthawks, want to say thank you to the Duluth community for hearing our proposal, for potentially bringing another great option for our youth to participate in sport. We'd like to say thank you to the activity directors, Mr. Road and Mr. Peterson, for encouraging and mentoring us. We'd also like to say thank you to the facilities team for allowing us to get access to literally, I think, the best fields in the state of Minnesota. Obviously, the big part are from our people that are representing us here with the Chargers and the Nighthawks. There are some people who have had the vision that had brought this forward, and they are in the form of community members. One person specifically, Andy Holak, who presented us the proposal last week, just thank you so much for everything that they have done to bring this proposal forward. Past leadership, people who, you know, run the sports organizations, just thank you for your vision to bring us to this day, momentous day for lacrosse. But also to the coaches and to the parents, the parents who drive and travel and pay the bills, thank you. People like these, schools like these, give our kids an amazing place to play, to build relationships, and to create lifelong memories, and that means so much. Thank you. Especially to the players, the guys that are going to follow me right now, and the ladies. It's all about you, and it will always be. Our efforts aren't just for those at Denfelder East right now, but for the younger kids like Ben, who is going to speak, who grew up, now you have a chance to grow up with a stick in your hands, just like we had a baseball glove or a soccer ball or a swimming pool. It's been an honor representing this organization, and it's our sole purpose to bring a wonderful game to the youth of our community. Thank you.
Okay, and Ben, you're next. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Ben Prunuski. I'm a fifth grader at Congdon Park School, and we've recently moved here a couple years, three years ago, from Madison, Wisconsin, and I've never, I'd never even heard of lacrosse till fourth grade, when I was in a four-five split, and my fifth grade friend of mine was telling him something about how he had a lacrosse tournament this weekend, and afterwards I went over and asked him, "What's lacrosse?", and he showed, um, he brought me to one, he told me about it, and then I got interested in it, and I started next year, and it was very much fun to learn a lot, to learn to play the new sport, because I'd been playing basketball all my life before that, so I never really divert, tried different things. And I, so I played my first year, and that was fun, and so I went over, and it's a spring, spring sport, so it's still in season, and next year I just, this year I decided to try spring basketball, so my mom was like, "You had to choose", and I'm like, I got her to convince, "Let me do both." So, life's been pretty hectic with that, a lot going on, stuff every weekend, practices every day, so, had a lot going on with that, and I think it was worth it to do both. One, just to keep myself physically strong, and, because I was reading about this, and my health teacher told me about this, it was seventy, seventy-five, I think, percent of kids from five to fifteen weren't physically fit or weren't getting enough exercise each day, and so you're supposed to get one hour of exercise each day. I mean, three hours each day works too, but, so, yeah, I got a lot going on, and I think it's worth it, and I always enjoyed playing lacrosse, and it's a very fun sport. I've made a lot of my friends through it, too. Like, a lot of the kids I hang out with at school, I didn't really know when I first moved here, and once I started playing lacrosse, I got to know them a lot better because they were on my team. And, once again, thank you, because now, um, the U9 program was started, I think it was last week, or some, my, the U9 program was started, and now my little brother is playing too, when Owen, I don't know where he is, but I have a little brother that's playing too, and then the little one, the three-year-old, is already wearing my old jersey and is saying, "Mom, look at me cradle." So, hopefully everyone gets into playing it, and I think it's a really fun sport. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Okay, next speaker, Laura Larson.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Larson, and I am a junior at Duluth East High School, and I've been playing lacrosse for five years now. I started in seventh grade. I learned about it from my brother, because he started in sixth grade, and I just fell in love with it ever since I started playing it. It was really hard for me. It wasn't a sport that I really got at first. It was really difficult, but I worked hard, and it really paid off to play it. And why I'm here is for you guys to support it, because it's an amazing sport, and I've met so many amazing people from it, and I've grown such strong relationships with girls from other schools playing it, and the opportunities that would grow is, we get to play more challenging teams from other high schools, and the clubs are shrinking. This year, we've only had like about like six teams to play, and it's been really difficult. And there's not as many girls, the club, the team shrunk dramatically this year. And I think it'd be a really amazing opportunity, because ever since I started, I've wanted it to become high school. Because, club is fun, but I think for high school, it'd be such a broadening thing for it to become, because we get to be the best that we can be playing more difficult teams in the skill level. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Olivia, are you next?
I'm Olivia Agar, and I'm a freshman at Hermantown High School. I've been on the Duluth Nighthawks for four years, and I love my teammates, and I would never want to leave them. There's new girls on the superior club team that have been amazing, they're amazing young girls, and they would really love to play on a high school team. And all I know for sure is that they, they're really great, and they're new, and they want to keep playing, but it would, I don't know, it's, they're really, uh, they're growing, and I really would like to see them go further. We're growing as a sport, but it's very important that we have each and every one of us to make a successful high school team in girls' lacrosse. Speaking for my whole team, all of us love this, because we get to interact with new people, and none of us want to separate. We've been through thick and thin, winning or losing, and we always have each other's backs. We grow together. Have you ever moved to a school where like you don't have the sport that you love? Because this is how it would feel, and Hermantown, Proctor, and Marshall wouldn't have enough girls to make a team, which would be devastating to see and experience. I know you're probably thinking that it'd be great to go at Easter Denfeld then, but the transportation would be a huge problem for everybody who lives far enough away that they couldn't drive themselves, and if they can't get a ride, they have to quit the sport that they really enjoy playing. Duluth may have the numbers for a starting lineup, but that's not enough. One successful team will lead to many more, and this is all I have to say for you today. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Olivia. Okay, we'll go to Daniel.
I'm Dan O'Connell. I'm a senior at Duluth East High School, and I'm a captain for the Chargers team. First off, I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk on behalf of my teammates. So, I was a part of the first middle school team of the Chargers, and so this group of seniors has been together since seventh grade, and that's really the first group that's gone through the entire process, and I can say, when we started, we were not a very good program, and I remember the varsity team wasn't too great, and just, you didn't get the vibe that we were going in the right direction, and just when, I'd say, eighth grade or ninth grade, we got new coaches, and we really turned around, and so from sophomore year and junior year, we didn't lose a game, and this year was our first regular season loss in three years, so, you know, it's, the, the competition was there before, and now it's really not. I think we've won all of our games in league play by more than 15 goals. So, I mean, it's still fun. We're still a team, I'd say, but, I mean, obviously, but just the competition isn't there. So, being a high school sport, you know, being a senior at East, and I'm sure the same for Denfeld, we support all of our sports, and just, you know, going out for hockey games or soccer games, whatever, there's always a bunch of people there, so it would mean a lot to go high school and have that support from the student body, and I know the future classes will represent the school district. With utmost respect, there's a bunch of great kids, and I can say that my best friends and the best kids I've met are on the team with me, and that's about all I have, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. It's nice hearing from our students. Next speaker is Barb Walcom.
Good evening, members of the board. I would like to comment on the censure meeting. I was really encouraged when the five of you members and the superintendent dropped their effort to remove Member Johnston, and I was also encouraged by the speakers who were thanking you for doing this and being ready to move on. The censure meeting quickly became a circus, not allowing Member Johnston or Member Welty to express their opinions. The chair adjourned the meeting before all the resolutions were voted on. I believe the Robert Rules of Order state, once a meeting is adjourned, you have to give a three-day notice to open the meeting again. Perhaps you should review the rules. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gary Glass.
My name is Gary Glass. I'm happy that I'm not up there with you after four years of being off the board, but your, your ranker did remind me of the days that I did serve, and I did face the same type of, of special board meeting treatment that Member Johnston had faced when I was in my second year, and the red plan was in its worst stage of, of development. I want to just say that, that you're expending a lot of energy on things that aren't helping the school district, when you take on individual professionals like Member Johnson or myself, and try to put them in, in their place where they cannot speak. And so, you're missing a good bet to use the best you can by letting them speak, by letting them come to your, your genociding meetings, not holding them in secret like you continue to do, which was a major problem when I was on it. You, you prevent your best people from giving you their best ideas, and so, that's one comment I'd like to make. My other comment is, is in, in the use of the word and the, the structure of civility. You must admit that if, if all the student body were watching you at the special meeting, they would say you weren't practicing civility very well, and I would encourage you to, to do that a bit more, and perhaps even go to the extent to modify your civility code to do what other organizations have done, and include a tenth item besides the nine that are in the civility code. The tenth item would be to tell the truth, and, and once you establish that, maybe the students watching you will have a better idea, and maybe come to serve you in the future. I'm happy to have served for four years, and I'm not coming back, so, thank you all.
Next speaker is M. Strombrin.
As a regular attender here, I've chosen to speak about a couple of things that I hear at committee meetings, because I attend those as well. While students at Denfeld reach 11th grade with skills around the fifth grade level, the board has been approached to consider another sport in the next four years, lacrosse. We have some of the newest playing fields and the largest aquatic centers in the state, and yet we have students failing and even going on to higher education in need of two or more years of remedial work. When are the taxpayers and parents going to see improvement in education, the real purpose of attending school in the first place? Seems to me that more expansion of sports and funding diverted from the already existing sports is untimely. Since the existing lacrosse has been successful for the last 10 years, it may be wise to allow them to continue on their own. You are considering how to fund sports for low-income participants later on in this meeting? You are facing dropping enrollment. You have the potential of another high school going to be built in the next few years, so how many more are going to be dropping out of your system when you're already failing our students and you're failing the taxpayers? The finest buildings have not improved the education in this district. It's time you stopped expanding things, start focusing, and what's being done about those two teachers that came here over two months ago? I haven't seen anything in the paper about how you're going to remediate these kids that come to Denfeld with a fifth grade learning ability. It's time to wake up to the needs of the community and get started on education in earnest. Thank you.
Next speaker is, is it, I've got two different same people. Is this Dr. Gregoire? Okay, that's the next person.
The name is Roger Gregoire, and I am a doctor. I'm now coming to say something which is, in many ways, given recent circumstances, At a recent, at a recent event, the iconography and the issue of, of racial aggression and intimidation that happened at Denfeld High School was characterized as a microaggression. Since hearing that, I've been assured, not only assured, but moved by the person who said it, and so this is in some ways, not to bring that person to the attention of the public, but to in fact say that the issue that, that surrounds the Denfeld, the act by those two students at Denfeld High School is extraordinarily grievous. It is not a trivial event. It's a powerful one. It's not just what they did to that, the iconography that included that young black man, but a fact that the caption said, "Let's get them all." This is a revisiting of the lynching of Clayton Jackson McGee almost 100 years ago. No one in Duluth should take that trivially, because the seeds of that lynching still remain sown in the city of Duluth. We have not uprooted that plant. It has the opportunity of flowering once more unless we do something about it. I'm sorry that that phrase was inadvertently used by this board, but I, I'm convinced, seriously convinced, that there was no intention of demeaning the event itself. I think it was inadvertent, and a poor choice of words, but to hear it in public for my community is an insult. I don't speak for the community, I only speak for myself, but I think you should all be really concerned about things like that happening again. We need to get rid of racism in the city of Duluth. It's a public health problem of enormous proportions. It affects everyone, and it eventually will pull the city down itself. Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker is Paul Busins.
I really wasn't going to speak, but I changed my mind. After witnessing that recent episode this evening here, it just really compelled me to share with the board some observations and some feedback, actually. I periodically do leave Duluth and visit with other people around the state, relatives and friends, some of who serve on school boards in far reaches of this state. Yeah, I just was even assaulted. boards in far reaches of this state. Um, yeah, I just was even assaulted this weekend. Not assaulted, I shouldn't use that term here, sorry. Um, what is going on in Duluth? They get the Minnesota School Board Association news feeds. And here's, and here's the characterization. You guys are a case study in poor leadership and governance. This is a person with no horse in the race, doesn't care about sides, doesn't care about art, doesn't care about anybody else, really. That's harsh. Doesn't have a horse. A case study in poor governance and leadership. Poor conflict management, poor governance, poor management of majority power, intolerance of disagreement and disagreeable people, poor meeting management. They watch the YouTube videos. Seriously, other board members are studying you people. As an analyst of human behavior and human psyche and kind of a news geek, you know, I find myself fascinated by the group dynamics, the individual dynamics, the strategic stuff going on, um, the personal and group governance dynamics. Our family talks about this stuff. We're weird. It's fascinating. And then my less mature side finds it just funny and humorous. I wanted to bring popcorn tonight, but I was running late. But then it settles in to the level of disappointment and, and absolute embarrassment. As a citizen here, as somebody who's been passionate about education in our community, it, it's watching a group of people tit-for-tat argue, "I'm right, no, I'm right, no, I'm right, no, I'm the victim, no, I'm the victim, no, I'm the victim." And we saw that even yet tonight. An argument of who the bigger victim is. You're all right and you're all wrong. It's embarrassing. It's about the last word. Turn the light off. This is what you're modeling? I suspect most of the, what, 9,000 students in the buildings that you govern function better than this. I expect better than this. And it's really disappointing to see tonight because it appears that it's likely to continue. I'm embarrassed for you.
Okay, I just want to mention that Member Leffler Kemp has now joined us. Um, so if you want to just notice that, she's on the screen. Um, okay, our next speaker is Lauren Martel.
Good evening again. Um, I didn't intend to speak twice, um, but I don't think you could have handled the special meeting much worse. Um, I can't match Mr. Glass, Glass's eloquence. I thought he said it very well. It wasn't civil, it wasn't respectful. Um, you can say there's two sides to it, but I do think there was an abuse of power, another attempt to shut down dissenting voices. Again, I'll say that the majority members of this board blame everyone else, but I do think that they are the catalyst for much of the antagonism in this room. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brad Clifford.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. Um, I'm Brad Clifford. I'm a citizen of Duluth and I sit on the state DFL Central Committee and as well as the 7th Senate District DFL. And I have the fortunate experience of growing up in a very strong conservative family and also the pleasure and pride to share that during the miracle of Minnesota in the 70s, that my father sat in the legislature. So, growing up, having folks like you at my kitchen table and listening and understanding that, two things. Yes, we have to educate you and yes, we have to pay for it. It was kind of the, the humorous joke in our family that get all you can get while you can get as a student. However, what are we teaching our students? Each and every one of you probably has gone to a caucus, allowed your voice to be heard and allowed other people's voices to be heard. And then there was a process at convention where you probably sought that nomination or endorsement. I sat on several nominations and endorsements committees. And yet, in a minority process, when the playing field isn't level, we're called to stand up and speak out against that. That allows any voice to be emboldened and encouraged to say something. But what you've taught the students in this process is more like a bullying tactic of how to eliminate somebody. And for that, there's a lot of reconciliation to happen and a huge healing that needs to occur. How you do that, I don't know. If it were me, I certainly wouldn't want to have to spend $10,000 or $65,000 to protect myself, to fight for my innocence because I've been deemed guilty until proven that. So here we are today, eliminating our constitution and due process, and because we can do that to someone, we're going to do it. And that's something I don't believe in a democratic representative process, would we ever want someone to understand how easy it is to allow tyranny to become in our midst. So what do we go and where do we go from here? That's the challenge. And I encourage you each to find that ability to embrace forgiveness, to embrace tolerance, to embrace grace to each other. And that's what we need to teach our students and each other. Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Art Johnston.
Thank you, fellow board members and people of Duluth. I came in here with an image that I thought, which I've shared with a couple of you with no reaction, that I wanted to stand up here and shake hands. And this, that'd be on the front page of the paper, but instead, what do we get? Very, very mean statements made about me and my family. It would be easy to laugh at that impotent censoring of me after the direction provided by the federal court that they cannot remove me. But it is kind of painful. And I apologize to Mr. Boosens for having to stand up for myself, but every once in a while I do, since I was cut off. I'd like to start by my comments by quoting George Orwell, author of 1984 Animal Farm, which I'm hoping is still being read in the school. Quote, "We have now sunk to a depth at which reinstatement is obvious as the first duty of intelligent men." What is obvious here? The school board and the superintendent, superintendent attempted to remove me from the board. This attempt by the school board cost a district upwards of $200,000. The school board threw every legal action at me that money could buy. They used every dirty trick in the book, but they failed. What is obvious? The school board relied on a report by Rice where no oaths were given. All the report's conclusions were her personal conclusions. She admitted all statements that didn't support her opinions. There were no police reports of the alleged shove claimed by the superintendent, Mr. Myneke or Mr. Westholm. So what is obvious? In order to stop the superintendent and the board's action to move me from my elected office, I filed a countersuit in federal court to stop the removal action. The Rice report was the only exhibit given to the federal judge by the school district's attorney. On May 6th, Chief Judge Davis, after reading all the attorney's statements and the attachments in the Mary Rice report, indicated that the school board could not remove me for the reasons they have stated, period. What is obvious? As soon as this punitive action against me by the school board was in front of the federal judge, the school board's case against me crumbled. When the school board knew that they were up against an impartial federal judge where oaths were given, they immediately gave up. The Rice report that this resolution of censorship is based on is nothing but political assassination by a hired gun. I disagree that the investigator's report was accurate. I made no attempt to influence the outcome of a staff meeting on May 12th, 2014. I never shoved or grabbed a superintendent or fellow board member on June 4th. These charges and others are false. The board's removal resolution is based on disapproval of what I said about the business of the school. It was unfortunate, I had to resort to the federal court to protect my right to speak freely on behalf of the voters who elected me. So what is this all about? The school board and the superintendent's harassment and intimidation. To sum up the superintendent's action, I'd like to quote a liberal columnist, Kristin Powers, in her new book, Silencing. The illiberals believe that people who express ideological, philosophical or political views that don't line up with their preferences should be completely silenced instead of using persuasion and rhetoric to make a positive case for their causes and views. They work to, 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 they work to deal, 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 to, to make that person making their arguments, um, through character assassination, demonization, and other dehumanizing tactics. So why am I here? Why didn't I give up long ago? Because the school board and the superintendent have a knife in my back. It is obvious that it is nothing but a rubber knife and a rubber knife couldn't hurt me. But a rubber knife tactic would be grounds for expelling students from our school. What about this empty incendiary hate speech that this board and superintendent have leveled against me? They would have all been expelled if they had followed their own rules. The sanction by the school board to drop his case against me is a victory for the U.S. Constitution, its 1st and 14th Amendment and protection of free speech. A victory for all elected officials in our government. A victory for the people in West Duluth that elected me. A victory for open, transparent, and accountable government. I'd like to thank the many people and organizations allowed me to survive this barrage.
Member Johnston, this is five minutes so far. Please.
The framers of the Constitution who believe in free speech, but I'll be done in a couple of minutes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The framers of our Constitution who believe in free speech that would enable right to prevail. I'd like to thank the federal court system. Thank God there's a federal court in Duluth that people can turn to and put a stop, and put a stop to this nonsense. I'd like to thank all the people that supported me in this horrible action by the superintendent. The literally hundreds of people that recognize me wherever I go and tell me, "Do not give up." And that if the superintendent is successful in removing me, they will reelect me again because I represent West Duluth. I'd like to thank all the people of Duluth who told me that they want a government of people that they elect, not someone appointed by five power-tripping board members that think they can remove anyone they want to overturn an election because they don't like what somebody says. I'd like to specifically thank Member Harry Welty for speaking up for truth and honesty on the board. I'd like to thank the alternative newspapers in Duluth, the Zenith, the Reader Weekly, especially essayist Lauren Martel, for writing about the truth and having journalistic standards. And thanking the TV reporters for trying to report on the truth. I'd like to apologize to the person that I love, Jane Bushy, my spouse and partner for 15 years, that is still being harassed by the school administration because we are together. To her and other people who have taken the brunt of the school district, do not give up. This is very sad. I had proposed that we take another route and try to heal and show leadership, indicated that my fantasy hopeful goal would be that we could all shake hands in front of the camera. What a glorious picture that would have been for the school and community. It is sad that instead the superintendent and board have decided to censor me, which will do nothing but continue fanning the flames of hatred.
Okay, that was seven minutes, just so you know. Okay, that's the last speaker. We are now going to go on to our reading communications and petitions. So Superintendent, you can go ahead and get started. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, there's one letter dated April 27th. It was a confidential letter addressed to Duluth Public School Board members from parents of an elementary school student, expressing their frustration with how an incident involving their child and another student was mishandled by the school. We are busy wrapping up the end of the school year. I'm sure the students, all the students here can tell you how many days there are left. Eleven. Um, there are many activities going on in our school. In fact, I know that there is a band concert going on at East tonight, and I'm sure Jude is going to be heading out probably early for the concert. And our students are very busy with final projects and studying for final exams and making sure that they have a, a strong finish to their school year. Um, earlier, we recognized Doreen Rouhannon as this year's Gold Fine Gold Star Teacher of the Year, and I wanted to mention the other nominees. Uh, there was Robert Burke, or Bob Burke, from Stowe Elementary, who happened to be my second grade teacher. Uh, Carol Gallinger from Congdon Park Elementary, Deborah Gilbertson from Piedmont, Melissa Kelly from Myers Wilkins, and Craftifer from Lester Park Elementary, Phyllis Mackler from Lakewood Elementary, and Melissa Scanlon Olson from Laura MacArthur, as well as Cindy Venberg from Lowell Elementary. And while all, all of the candidates are, are great teachers, it was Doreen that was recognized as this year's Gold Star Teacher of the Year, and we thank her for all she does. Now, why don't we hear about what's going on in the schools? Um, Tommy, would you like to start?
As Superintendent Grant said, it has been a very busy month at Denfeld. Uh, our students are thoroughly tested out. Between the ACT and the many AP tests that have taken place over the past weeks, um, I believe upwards of six, seven, eight AP tests were given. I only participated in one, but I know students participated in four or five. Our prom was held earlier this month. It was Great Gatsby themed. This Thursday is our fourth annual Matt Carroll 5K in memory of Matt Carroll. His memorial track meet was held last week. Our honors night is May 28th, and our graduation night is June 4th, both at 7:00. And I would like to invite the United School Board of Duluth, Minnesota to attend. Also, softball, tennis, baseball, and track sections are coming up. There is tennis sections tonight as well as softball sections. Our softball is led by our pitcher, Ashley Typlow, who pitched a perfect game in recent weeks. Our seniors only have seven days left of high school. That's it. Uh, next week is the senior assembly and the senior cruise is tomorrow. That's all I have to report from the western half of the district. Jude?
So, yeah, like Tommy said, there's a lot of just different things going on at the schools, just kind of wrapping up the end of the year with ACT testing and AP testing and everything like that. And then, of course, not much of a, a rest in between AP tests and finals, just in a week or two weeks depending on if you're senior or not. Um, but different things going on at East. Our robotics team actually just took first place in the state competition. Um, so that was really exciting to see that, that level of success with that team. And then also one, the, both of the, the two main student organizations at East, the executive board and association, have both selected their new boards for next year. Um, so that's been exciting to see, kind of, it's sort of, May is always kind of that turning point between all the different organizations and just the different leadership positions and everything, and then just the whole kind of paradigm shift within the entire school kind of shifts over to the next year in May, or at least kind of starts that process. Um, and everything, like Tommy also said, just everybody's kind of getting ready for finals, just getting ready to, everyone's excited to get out of school, just only a couple of weeks left, and it's starting to be more consistently sunny out, even though I see now it's, looks rather rainy and dreary again. Um, but yeah, just kind of gearing up for finals and everything too. And, um, just to, to finish off, since I do have to leave in just a matter of minutes, and, um, since I won't really get an opportunity to comment on everything further on, since I will be gone. gone, I do want to briefly comment on just everything that has happened tonight and everything that has happened over the past several, several months, and one could say even years or things like that. From, from the student perspective, it does, it is to an extent disappointing just to see this level, and again, like many, several previous speakers have said, that it's not just one side versus another side, that really, not, not even the entire school board, but just the entire broader community and the entire district is not necessarily at fault, but has some sort of role in this entire situation. And it doesn't seem that any of us have really been taking that role as seriously and as, we just, we haven't been going about addressing this whole entire conflict in a proper manner. And I think that it is hard, from the student perspective, to see this kind of behavior at every school board meeting or at committee meetings, and then still be told that this is all still for the students and with the student, the education of the students in the forefront of everyone, of everyone's minds, including the entire school board, the entire district, and the entire community. It is, it's hard to hear that and believe it 100% that that is the utmost priority of everyone in this organization when we come here and we see this kind of behavior. And so with that, I would like to second the pleas of pretty much everyone here, I think, that we are faced tonight with an opportunity to really just kind of forgive and forget and to move on from this entire thing, whether it's been just the past 11 months or the past 10 years or however long of a time this has been. We have a really good opportunity tonight to move on and to actually prove to the student body that education is the utmost priority of this governing body. And perhaps it's a little bit naive and idealistic as a 16-year-old high school student to request that of this kind of a board or governing body, but I would just, I guess, just please everyone, just can we move on from this conflict because it seems like it's just petty middle school drama almost, that I don't even see things like this sometimes in the high school level. And I think that every single one of us has the capability of moving on from this and dealing with each and every single person respectfully. And I would just ask that we all move on so we can actually prove to the entire community and prove to especially the student body that the education of the youth in this school district is the top and only priority for this entire district. So, thank you.
Tonight we have another event, so if you can hang around for just one more minute. It's the annual Hayes, Hayes Family Scholarship Drawing. Fred Hayes graduated from Central High School in 1915. The Hayes Family Scholarship Trust provides an annual scholarship for a graduate of each of Duluth's two high schools who are enrolling in a post-secondary school in the fall. And two non-renewable awards of $2,250 will be granted this year. How this works is all of the students who want to be in the bowl for a selection, their names have been put into the bowl, and Assistant Superintendent Crawford and our student school board reps will assist by drawing the names from the Hayes Family Scholarship Bowl. One winner and two runner-ups from each high school are drawn. Which school's in there first?
East High School.
East High School. So Jude will draw the names.
Jude's an age nine.
I bet it is. No, he's a junior.
Pick my daughter. I could use the money. Oh, wait, hold on, hold on.
Timothy James Fossum-Burnier.
Timothy.
And now we'll take just a moment to switch out the names to the Denfeld students. I noticed that East names had a larger font than the Denfeld names. So the Denfeld strips are tiny.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I'm going to turn it over to Member Harala with our Education Committee report. You can move over.
You need to be here. You're leaving?
Yeah, I'm leaving. Yeah. Yeah, you can come here.
I'll be here.
Here's your thing. Thanks, Annie.
Right, thank you, Member Chair Sliga-Ponco. It is her daughter's senior band, or band concert, as well as Jude's junior band concert, and so they're both heading to that. And so as vice chair, I will conclude the running of this meeting. So, and I'm going to go ahead and read our Education Committee report from our last board meeting. Just going to get all set here. So in spite of events from earlier tonight, there actually is a lot going on in our district in spite of how there are dynamics that need to grow and change and, and resolutions that need to be followed, we need to be found. There's a lot going on in our district. There's a lot happening. Kids are being educated. We have staff that are phenomenal, teachers, paraprofessionals, staff that support our schools, bus drivers, a lot of people doing that, so I'm proud to put forward our education report tonight. And we had a three-hour-long meeting last week. It was great, had some great community members that came to speak. So the first item, first informational item that we had was the Duluth Head Start Self and Community Assessment Results. Some really great information about Duluth Head Start. They do a lot of data analysis from a lot of community resources, and they provided that for us with our Head Start program. A reminder to a lot of folks that are in the meeting tonight, Head Start is unique in the Duluth School District, that we, we host Head Start within our district, and it's something that families that are, it's a way that families get to know our schools before they come into the schools and look forward, forward to that. So that item was informational. The next piece is our Elementary Standards-Based Report Cards, and I am going to pass this over to Dr. Carey to just give a brief update on, on the Elementary Standards-Based Report Cards. I, I know that, I was assured that there was a large, there, so there has been a lot of process and change in how we're looking at our elementary report cards, and this is kind of the continuing piece of education that we have, we've had, been working a lot with teachers, and lots of community conversations, and especially for elementary parents, they'll have a chance to do this. So, Dr. Carey, would you mind just a brief overview for that, please? Thank you. Dr. Carey is our curriculum director.
This year, there's, there's been an ongoing movement in the district for a number of years, looking at elementary report cards and, and how we are reporting back to families at the progress that their children are making academically in grades K through 5. And that work had been kind of ongoing but never led to final kind of culmination in terms of change in report cards. And so coming on board, we felt that that was a key priority that the district had been moving towards that we needed to complete. And so essentially, we dusted off the work that had already been done and moved forward by working with our teachers through our grade-level meetings. We have an opportunity three times a year to work with each group of teachers from each grade, so we used that opportunity to vet through our standards-based report cards. As many people probably are aware, the state of Minnesota sets standards, which are essentially the learning expectations for kids. Often times, a report card ends up being a clumped analysis of how kids have done over all of that range of learning expectations. A standards-based report card essentially breaks down in a little more fine detail what those learning expectations are for students so that parents have a better understanding of what their child is expected to learn and their progress towards learning those skills and concepts. And so essentially, this is a standard practice, or is becoming a standard practice statewide and nationally, and we just are taking that opportunity to move forward in our regard.
Great. Thank you very much for the overview. And members, we'll make it through this agenda, and then we'll have questions, but making sure that we will go through. The next piece I'm very excited about, our eighth-day specialist rotation. As we were looking at the, as staff were looking at the professional, the need for professional learning communities, we're making investment in an eighth-day specialist, so we'll be adding PE, another day of PE in our elementary schools. I'm very excited about that, something our brains on exercise are, are much more awake and much more active, and lots of evidence-based items connected to that. So that's our eighth-day specialist rotation that will also provide our teachers an opportunity to gather for 45 minutes within their cohorts every eight days to, to partner, to learn, and to be looking at the data of their students just to ensure student success. So glad to see that we're able to find appearing into opportunities for our district to, to continue that. Professional learning communities are a way that we're also discussing continually, students that are, that need additional, an additional push, students that are, that are doing really well and need to continue being pushed, and also addresses our students that are struggling, and is also an effective piece of addressing our achievement gap. Our next piece is curriculum work, and Dr. Carey, I'm going to hand this back to you to talk a little bit more about the curriculum work for this summer and a pretty great meeting that you had, and some community members that joined us for, at the meeting. Thank you.
All right, there were two pieces to the report on this line, line item. First was just a report out on our, the continuation of our curriculum alignment work, which was begun the previous summer, summer of 2014. The district were committed to continuing to improve our educational programs and our curriculum and are investing in that again this summer to work towards an aligned and sequenced K-12 curriculum to ensure we're providing a strong program for our kids. And part of that is always the consideration of how our curriculum meets the needs of our entire community. At our last board meeting, we heard from members of the NAACP as in regards to the Clayton Jackson McGee Memorial Curriculum. After some investigation, we as a district had committed to embedding that program or that curriculum back in 2008. We have taken some steps to do that and had done that already in some regard, but there was discussion about how we can strengthen that across our curriculum. I had conversation with members of the NAACP and our EAT committee, and we had very good discussion about how we continue to move forward to make sure that our curriculum is representative of all of our students in the community.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that overview, Dr. Carey. We will have information, actually, head here. We tabled, we tabled the item for summer school presentation. That information will be provided in an upcoming meeting. Grant applications, the Minnesota Youth at Work Competitive Grant. So the Duluth Schools has agreed to enter into a collaborative agreement with the city of Duluth, very excited about this, to make an application for Minnesota Youth at Work Competitive Grant. If awarded, funds will be based, will be used to build employment skills for economically disadvantaged youth or at-risk youth ages 14 to 24. And so the in-kind contribution for, we'd have an in-kind contribution of $6,934, but this provides some specific hands-on opportunities and employment for students ages 14 through 24. And our staff that has been working on this has talked about how they really appreciate working alongside partners from the city of Duluth, and just glad to know that we're continuing that relationship. So that, that completes our informational items. We will head into our action items here. We did, the first one was our state Head Start Grant Approval. Pam Reese Director presented the 2015, 2016 Head Start Grant for review and approval, and that state, that state grant covers our programs with our families in trans-
Transition.
Yep, sorry, Families in Transition, and also with YWCA. We provide, as a district, early childhood programming at, within those sites, really site-based support for families that need it. And so that is a part of our state grant approval, so it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above item, and I'll just read through the action items, board members. The next piece was recommendations of revisions to policy 6140.10, co-curricular activities participation fees, and I'm actually going to ask to table that piece, and I will defer to a, well, not to table, actually. So part of the presentation was that we add a fee, a $25 fee to students that are on free and reduced lunch, so that, because there is a concern that students are joining groups and it's free, and then they leave and there's a larger cost that's associated with the students doing that. I don't think that's enough for us to do as a district, just to put $25 at something. It's, I don't know, maybe I'll be careful. We should discuss it later. All right, thank you. I'm going to, I'll pull this as an item mine. Going to get really heated about that one. I don't like it. So, all right, so the, we, we'll talk about that. Recommended revision to policy 5084, the bullying prohibition policy. This was the first reading of our update to policy 5084 of the bullying prohibition policy. Ron Lake, our climate coordinator, was, was joined also by two community members, Kathy and Anita, that were a part of a, a group of community members and school staff that are updating and doing a very comprehensive overview and update of our bullying policy. This is in, in response to the Safe and Support of Schools Act that was passed this last year. We did pass an updated, we passed an interim policy last summer to make sure that we were up to date with state statute, but then took this last year, and it was neat to hear the community members talk about all of the reviews that they did of information and case studies to make sure that there is a comprehensive bullying policy in place. So that is our first reading of this, of this, of this policy. So it's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the recommended revisions to policy 5084, bullying prohibition. The next is a proposal to create a Duluth, Minnesota State High School League Lacrosse Team. So all of you that have been waiting for a while, we, by now, appreciate the comments from before and had a wonderful presentation from, from the lacrosse, family lacrosse coach and families in support, and heard some really great support earlier today. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above proposal to create a Duluth, Minnesota State High School League Lacrosse Team for our, for Duluth Schools. That it, it will be a team that is district-wide, it won't be in specific schools yet, it will be with, for Duluth school students to attend. So it'll be similar to how we do girls hockey, boys swimming, it'll be, there will be a girls team and a boys team, a varsity and a JV, and then as, looking at numbers. So appreciate community partners and our students that showed up today. That is the most exciting part. So great job speaking, and for those of you that have come to our meeting tonight. So, that's great. Yep, we're almost there. I have to finish this report, and then we talk about it, and then we actually vote on it, and then we can all cheer. The next piece is another, another exciting piece. Mike Zeeman, with the Duluth Equestrian Club Advisor, presented to request that the Duluth Equestrian Club become an independent provider of the district, another opportunity for students to get involved outside of schools. He talked about students all the way on the spectrum of just understanding and meeting horses for the first time and really learning all the different parts of it, all the way through students riding and competing. And so he was requesting, this was a club in the past that went dormant, and what I was really impressed by was that he's looking to find sustainability within the program to keep it going and to make sure that this is something students can keep doing. And I, I was really impressed to hear the story of just how- And I was really impressed to hear the story of just how this is, this has affected in a positive way his family and, and the families of all the students that are involved. So, so exciting about that. So it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the item of independent provider request Duluth Equestrian Club. The next piece are the acceptance of grants and awards to the Duluth Public Schools. So, member Murneke, I may need to, I'm gonna pass it over to you to have you read it.
Except I've lost it already. 105, there we go. This is something we do every month. We accept grants, we're very happy for them. Resolution, acceptance of grants, awards to the public schools, whereas Minnesota statute 465-03 requires the school district accept the grants by resolution expressing the terms provided by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grants according with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept, describe grants from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wish to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. I move E5153267.
So it's been, it's been moved by member Murneke, seconded by member Welty. Any discussion, members? Sorry, member Johnston, is your light on from earlier, or do you want to comment on this? Okay. Yep, I'm moving, I'm going through the whole agenda, and then we'll, then we'll have it. So I'll make sure, for light, you're first, so, superintendent.
Is a comment?
I just wanted to comment on this. This is grants that are given to individual teachers who have applied to the foundation, and they share their innovative and exciting ideas for their classes. And I heard from the foundation that this year, they had the most applications that they have had in the past 10 years. And in fact, they had so many applications that they weren't actually able to provide funds for all of them, but they encouraged teachers to apply again next year and keep up the innovative and exciting work. And I believe next month, they're going to come, and we'll hear a little bit more about the projects.
Great. Thank you. Members, any other, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, Rosie, I heard Rosie. So it passes six to zero. The resolution passes. The next piece are, is our diploma requests. So the following students have completed all high school graduation requirements and should be awarded a diploma, Jamie Mara Rae Perry and Mike Philip Fob. So it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma requests, and board members, I move the education committee agenda for May. Do we have a, it has been moved and seconded, moved by me, and seconded by member Welty. And first discussion was member Johnston, who had his light on. He, he had it on earlier. So, items that folks wanted, you wanted to pull an item, member Johnston?
Yeah, usually we just go through and mention items we want to pull.
Yes, yep.
1A4.
1A4. Okay. All right, so member Johnston, member Murneke.
2D and 2E.
2D and 2E. All right, thank you. And member Welty?
A2 and A3, 1A2 and 1A3.
Great. Thank you. We will go in order of the items polled, so member Welty will keep your light on if you have a comment on that.
Thank you, Chair.
On 1A2.
Actually, I'm just going to make a general comment that we're referred to, A2, 3, and 4. I've heard people in the school board often inform the public and those watching on television that we do a lot of our work in the, the education committee meeting, and that, I'm not sure has always been true, but it certainly seems to have been true the last year or so. And as you pointed out, Chair Harla, chairing the education committee, we had about a three-hour meeting, and, and I would just like to pull out for the, the public's awareness, my constant appreciation for Dr. Carey's work in all of these items. We had an extensive discussion, which we have not repeated here, but Dr. Carey has been a breath of fresh air in the curriculum department, long-needed, and I just want to express my gratitude, which I know is shared by all the other board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, oh, Dr. Carey.
I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate that very much, but the other piece I would like to say is that I'm the public face of an entire department, and the fact that the district has chosen to invest in that department and good people in that department is a large reason why we're be able to bring this to you. And so I'm the face you attach to it, but there are a lot of good people actually doing the real work, and so just wanted to make sure that they get recognized for that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any other piece, comments on 1A2? That also includes 1A3, or, sorry, 1A3 as well, that was pulled? Okay, seeing no lights on that. 1A4, member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to kind of second what member Welty said about the importance of stuff that we have here, and again, Dr. Carey, it's, you know, I'd like to welcome people that are in the audience, and certainly in the TV land, that sometime these education committees are very good, they went on for three hours, lots of good discussion, and so please pay attention to our committee meetings, which are usually Monday and Tuesday before the school board meetings, and try to come in those and hear if you have any questions for us, please fire those away, hopefully before the committee meetings, and those are always, always good. We won't bore everybody for fucking three hours tonight, I don't think, but, but thank you, Madam Chair, for some of the highlights. I do have a couple real quick comments on item number four. And again, this is a, in spite of, or it's, it's just a footnote. I think that we did have people come and speak to us from NAACP, and, and I think that we could have acknowledged that better in, in the agenda, and I think that, or in the actual writing in the agenda, their, you know, their thing is not even on there. When I got there, I didn't even know were we gonna, were these people going to be able to speak or not. I think it was just a little bit of an oversight, I think we could do better in making sure that people know when they're going to be speaking, and, and actually welcoming them and telling them, yes, you are part of this agenda item. There was, and I do want to bring up another thing, kind of onto that, why it's kind of important, maybe a small thing, but it's important. Remember, our speaker earlier mentioned a, he mentioned the, what was the word he used? The incident that was done was a micro incident?
Microaggression.
Microaggression incident. There was also another comment made by one of the other presenters. She didn't like being referred to as "you people." These are African-American communities, and I think that is very important, that they are sensitive to this kind of stuff. Everybody's sensitive to that kind of stuff. We don't want to use things like "you people" and "microaggression incidents." It's just because this was an important incident, these are outstanding members of our community that spoke. I think in line of that, they could have been given better recognition by having their item on the agenda, actually, the heading on that. But having said that, thank you, Dr. Carey, for the work. I've heard a lot of good reports about people there. Really hopeful that they can implement this, this curriculum, and we all know how important it is, so thank you.
Thank you, member Johnston. Appreciate that. All right. Moving on to, actually didn't, didn't, who pulled 2AB? 2B?
You were going to.
Wow. 2B, I pulled that earlier. So it was recommended in the revisions for the policy that we add funding for $25, and I'll put in my opinion after this report. I don't think that this is, I think we need more information on this, and at the committee meeting, it was, it was requested that we do get more information on how this works. Other districts that have done it, we haven't seen any of that follow-up information. I just don't think this is enough. I think it could be a deterrent for students, and I think if we were to decide something like this, we need, there needs to be a lot more discussion, and I, just a little bit more of an evidence-based approach to ensuring that students are involved and encouraged. I'm also interested to know why students are leaving, if they're leaving, and so that's, I would look forward if this is something that they want to have passed, that the, that we hear from, from the schools, and, and-
Should we move to table?
So I move to table this item.
I'll second.
It's been moved by me, seconded by member Murneke, and I think there's a comment from member Welty. So there's an item on the, on the table to motion. Is there discussion?
Yes, we, we did have an extensive discussion about this, and it was echoed in today's news paper story about this, and I think it is fair to say that we all discussed a lot of downsides to this, especially relating to putting all kinds of hardships on, on kids who come from tough experiences. I really would prefer just simply to vote against this, but if, if, if the action of tabling it will accomplish that as well, I'm, I guess I'll be satisfied with that.
Superintendent Grandseth?
I did, I just wanted to point out that in your packet, there was a memo from Assistant Superintendent Crawford with the information that you requested, and I think that went out a few days ago.
It did.
I know that the, okay, you did get it, okay.
I missed.
And I think member Lefler Kemp had her hand up. I'm not sure if she wanted to say something.
Member Lefler Kemp, do you have a card? She's got her card. One, one, Rosie, one second.
Right here.
All right. Sorry, can I just mention, member Lefler Kemp is at Global's with her daughter for Destination Imagination. Ordine East, Laura MacArthur, and Piedmont are all down in Kentucky currently, and so she's joining us from, we can see her lovely face up here. So, go ahead, member Lefler Kemp.
It's actually Ordine East, Laura MacArthur, and Lowell that are here, and looking forward to seeing all those families as they're coming in like we did. Back to the extracurricular, I just wanted to support tabling it, to give us a chance to get and gather more information as well. I think some of the comments why I want it tabled are, have already been said, but I'd like it tabled, and we can have further discussion.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, there's a motion to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to zero. The motion is tabled. Heading to 2D and 2E, we'll start with 2D, member Murneke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to skip right to E and make sure that people out there know that this will be of no cost to the school district. When we start talking about equestrians and things like that, oh, what's this going to cost us? No cost. 2D, I was a coach and advisor and activities director for many, many years, and I work with a lot of groups and teams, and I've always seen the value of it. Activities like this provide a lot of opportunities. We saw from these young people who spoke to us tremendous leadership skills, and they should be commended for this. I know, and some people might disagree with me, but I know from all the years I've been involved in this, that activities such as lacrosse teaches communication skills, leadership skills, time management skills. The kids learn to get along with each other, and these friendships, as Mr. Westholm could tell you, these friendships last for many, many, many years. I congratulate you, young men and women, for going forth in this. I was active in starting a couple of activities prior to this, and they've been very successful, and I think lacrosse is going to be very successful. The one thing I want to mention, that activities directors from across the state will tell you, that students get involved in activities, do better in school, have better grades, have higher GPAs. Again, whether it's drama, or newspapers, or football or lacrosse, you'll find that the students do better, so I urge that we pass this.
Thank you, member Murneke. Member Westholm?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo my support for this also, as a longtime coach in a number of things. I always felt that I, I could really teach some things in co-curriculars that I really couldn't teach in the classroom, you know, whether it's value of teamwork, or putting others before yourself, and, you know, there were some real values to that, so I think that comes with a lot of our co-curriculars. One of the questions I had, was there, was there a comment that they were going to pay for the costs of lacrosse?
I'll defer to the superintendent.
There was a transition plan, that there would be no cost to the district for the first four years, and then we would reassess those costs.
Should that be in the?
It is.
It is? Okay. I don't know how I missed that.
All right. So seeing no other lights or flashcards from Rosie, I move the education committee agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Committee carries, six, zero.
That was it, lacrosse.
That was it. Now I'll just take a brief moment to say that it's really cool that you're here, being a part of policies being passed and advocating on yourselves. Way to show up and keep showing up. Thank you so much for all you're doing, and enjoy your evening and what's left of the sunshine, unless you want to stick around through our HR Committee, Human Resources Committee. All right, moving on to our H, Human Resources Committee report, I turn this over to member Murneke.
Sure, I start talking, I'll leave. Boy, if I had a nickel for every time that happened. I was absent at the Human Resources Committee for reasons, because of the immediate switch. There was a, there's a switch in time. I can do the staffing report, certified appointments, five, certified extension, one, certified leaves, 20, certified long-term sub, five, certified retirements, five, certified temporary increase, six, non-certified appointments, three, non-certified demotion, one, non-certified leaves, 20, non-certified long-term subs, two, non-certified permanent decrease, one, non-certified permanent increase, one, non-certified promotion, two, non-certified resignation, one, non-certified retirement, two, non-certified termination, one, non-certified temporary increase, four. That is the staffing report. Other action items, resolution HR 5153262, approval of two contracts for Education Minnesota Clerical Local 692-A. Madam Chair, would you like me to read that resolution?
Yes, please, member Murneke.
Thank you.
We'll move them one by one.
Right. Resolution, Education Minnesota Clerical Local 692-A, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709 in St. Louis County, Minnesota, that collective bargaining agreement between the ISD 709 and the Education Minnesota Clerical Local 692-A, a summary of which is in the hands of all School Board members, be approved and adopted for the period of July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2015, and July 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2017, inclusive in that the chairperson and clerk of the board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. I move resolution HR 51532623.
It has been moved by member Murneke, seconded by member Welty. Any discussion?
Well, yeah, hold on for a second. I'm behind. Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Yep, I heard her. There's, there's like a four-second delay. Thank you. The next piece, our next resolution?
Item 2B has been polled, and item 2C has been polled. We now, we now go to the reading of policy 4015, first reading, and Mr. Swarsky?
Actually, one, so page six-
Actually, one, so, page six, Resolution HR 5153263, the terminate, the kind of our annual termination of certified probationary staff.
We don't have to read that, though.
Do we need to read that?
Second time we do.
We, we will revisit that for the June meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, there's...
We have, that's the first reading, it's in the book, if anybody cares to look at it. And I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean, if anybody cares to look at it, it's in, it's in, in the book. Informational items, we have 4015R prohibiting harassment and violence on page nine, and that, too, is a first reading. And that will be revisited at the next HR meeting. No?
Member, Chair Murneke, sorry, Member Murneke, so this is the regulation that goes along with the policy for bullying, that, that is the prohibition of harassment and violence?
I apologize, that's going to be just accepted then into the entire, the entire HR report. So, I move the HR report.
Second.
It has been moved by Member Murneke, seconded by Member Welty. Any discussion on the HR Committee report? Member Johnston?
Item two D.
Item two D. All right. Member Johnston? Item two D? Oh, was it, Member Lefler Kemp? Was there anything? No, I don't think so. Johnston, great.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to meet, get the committee meetings on Wednesday, so I don't, don't have a lot of concern. I do want to push, I'll probably talk about it more next week. Again, I hear a lot about this. I hear people talking about the, I tell people how to go, where to find the harassment form. I also hear a little bit of, what good is it? Nobody does anything anyway. It takes so long to happen. And I will talk about, more about that next week, or next month, I mean. But, kind of emphasize that it's, it's easy to put lots of words down, but it's up to the people that implement it, if it's going to be successful or not, and I haven't seen this being implemented very well, nor the people that talk to me, my constituents. So, I'm talking about more of that next month.
Thank you. One piece that was discussed at the committee that I appreciated, that was highlighted by, by Anita Stetch, was that there's a process that's put, that's now put in place at the schools if there is a complaint. There, there's a current process, but they've clarified the process if students are, have something going on with bullying, and I, does, and I guess I would ask, does it actually tie directly to this, as well to Superintendent?
As part of the legislation, as defined in the legislation, the harassment and the bullying policies are completely separate now. And so, that went along with the bullying, and then there's separate documentation and processes in place for harassment.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Mr. Sworowski?
I just wanted to second what the superintendent has said, and essentially, what we've done is we've updated the language in the harassment policy to meet what is the, the new updated language and recognizing a lot of the protective groups. In the regulation, we've defined, we've gone through and made definitions, we have the process outcomes, and we also have a provision in there for early resolutions in order to speed some of those processes up and, and, and just keep that process moving.
Okay. Thank you very much. Member Johnston?
Just a quick clarification maybe the superintendent can do. The harassment applies to both students and staff, and bullying is sta, or students. Am I correct on that, just as people out here else know what the difference is?
Yes, that is how the statute defines both of those, that the bullying piece is, for students and harassment is both students and staff.
Thank you very much. Members, any other lights or comments on the HR Committee? All right, seeing no lights, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, motion carries, six, zero. And now, we move on to the Business Committee report. Member Westholm?
Yes, Business Report, we've got several things, obviously, as we always do. I will jump down, and Member, Mr. Hanson, if, you know, you can jump in at any time, and I'll just go through the items here, and then we'll go through, obviously, the ones that get pulled. First one I'll point out is one H, and the child nutrition adult meal price increase. And that has been proposed to go from 360 to 375. And not only to cover costs, but, one thing that was mentioned, it needed an increase to cover costs, but it'd be so much easier, first it was proposed to be 370, but to be 375, because making change would be easier. That may seem like a trivial little thing, but it's not. Having a, you know, stood in, in many high school lunch lines, and observed many, you're trying to get several hundred kids through a line as quickly as you can, and let them get what they want, and the adults are often part of that, too. And so, having that quarter as change, as opposed to trying to dig up dimes and nickels, really, it really is, is not an insignificant thing. Then we go to bids, RFPs and quotes, three, we have three this month. Bid 1239, Ordine East Middle School improvements in Lakewood Elementary access road paving. Two is bid 1240, Lester Park Elementary School site improvements. And three is Western Tennis Courts and Discus Civil. I'm not sure that's the right word, is that the right word? Discus Civil player?
Yep.
Yeah. That word, I'm not sure how it fits in there. But anyway, and then B, we go to RFPs, and we have a quote, one quote this week, or this month, a quote 4200-1, district-wide electrical labor, high and low voltage electrical labor, 34,700, is recommended that School Board approve, entering a contract with Hunt Electric Corporation, based on their low bid. And then we get to three policies and regulations. Bylaw 9115, school district elections. And we had some discussion about that, and this would be the second reading, and I'm sure, well, we may have some discussion again tonight about that. And then B is suspension of policy 3136, travel in district, in-state and out-of-state. Then four, contracts, change orders and leases, contracts, dental high school career and technical center addition, and, and that one, that was, to, to put in the fab lab. And then B, change orders, C, leases, and then five, resolutions. And A is acceptance of donations, that's a monthly routine.
Member...
Yes.
We can go ahead and do that resolution?
Oh, okay.
The acceptance of donations?
Yeah, okay. And that's on page 54, and that's B-5-15-3264, and is recommended that we approve that resolution and acceptance of those donations. And again, that's on, oh, second?
Yep, I, so it's been moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Murneke. Any comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes six, zero, and we'll head to the next one.
Okay, and C is placeholder, B-5-15-3270, resolution...
Item B.
I'm sorry, what?
Item B.
Oh, I'm sorry. B-5-15-3265, authorized student activity bank account signer, and that is important, that we approve that, and it's recommended that we approve that resolution and authorize student activity of bank account signers.
So, it's been moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Murneke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero, for the authorized student activity bank account signer.
Okay, and C is a placeholder, resolution providing that school board general elections held after 2017 shall be held in the even-numbered years and establishing a transition plan for that. And it's recommended that the loose school board approve that resolution, and resolution providing that the school board general elections held after 2017 shall be held in the even-numbered years and establishing a transition plan.
Member Westholm, I have a brief point of, I have a question for Mr. Hanson. So, it's a resolution?
Yep.
But we, we have, yes, but we haven't had a chance to discuss earlier, and so, I want, I would like the change, it's the second reading of the change in the school board elections, and we, before we go ahead and pass this, I'd like to make sure that we have the opportunity to have that discussion in case that's there, so...
So, do we table that?
We just... Yes, yes. I, so, to take a step back, item 3A, bylaw, school district elections, that comes first, and then we need to do the resolution after. Is that correct, Mr. Hanson? Oh, I'm turning you on. Okay.
That would probably be a, certainly a logical way to do that, and if that's the board's preference, I encourage you to take them in that order then.
Okay. We're going to do that, so, just this piece, I'll be moving, we're going to skip that one, and we'll move to that at the end, because I'll be looking to table that.
So, you want me to...
You want to do D. Item D, thank you.
Resolution approving the 10-year capital facilities plan in a 2015 update, and it's recommended that we approve that resolution. A B-5-15-3268, resolution approving the 10-year capital facilities plan. And then E is a placeholder, sale of property.
Oh, we're actually, do you move that?
Move D? I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I moved the resolution B-5-15-3268. That's the resolution approving the 10-year capital facilities plan.
So, it's been moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Murneke. Any discussion on this motion? Yep. One moment, please. I'm, I'm just getting used to this, this is my first time chairing, so, thank you for your patience, Member Welty.
Yeah, I was busy looking at the resolution. Are we at talk, at this point, talking about voting for the bylaw 9115?
We're not, and I, so sorry for that, that wasn't clear. So, I'm going to put, we're going to put those to the end of the committee, we're going to make it through the rest of this, we're finishing the resolution, so we're on the resolution approving the 10-year capital facilities plan, so, thank you, I just, so, if there are comments on that? All right. Member Johnston?
Yeah, I'm sorry that I missed the meeting here, and was, been a little bit busy here earlier today to catch up, but I'll ask a generic question. Most of these things have recommissioning, building mechanical systems, and I believe that most of these ones that are here, I'm looking at Homecroft, Lakewood, Lowell, maybe there's others, were part of the red plan, and those, one of, was one of them, I think it was, main thing they did on those plans was do mechanical systems, so just, could mention real briefly, Mr. Leiter, about why are we putting more money into recommissioning after these are only a couple of years old?
We'll pass that to Mr. Leiter. Mr. Leiter?
Member Johnston, members of the board, the Minnesota Department of Education, as part of its alternative facilities, bonding and levy program have identified and are encouraging school districts to commission mechanical systems, or recommission mechanical systems every five years. The buildings that I have shown in our 10-year plan are the first four buildings that we did, and it was approaching or exceeding five years ago. And we, we haven't done a recommissioning prior to this, in fact, during our long-range plan is when that term and recognition of the value was identified by the department. And so, what I'm looking for is approval of those items in this plan, and my intent is to receive proposals from firms that would do that recommissioning, and in that process, help us to define the, and confirm the value of that service. And what, what they're going to do is look at the original designs, the original operating sequences in those buildings, confirm that they're continuing to operate the way they were designed, and provide us with information relative to that, should there need to be any adjustment made to those sequence of operations. So, it's a, it's a new venture relative to recommissioning, and we may find after having some of these performed, that it's not necessary that they're still operating per their original intent and design, and there hasn't been any changes made since, since they were put into operation. I hope that answers your question, what we're trying to accomplish with that.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. Member Johnston?
Yeah, no, thanks for that feedback. The price isn't real high or anything, I'm not really complaining about that, but just kind of curious. I'm assuming you're going to be looking at indoor air quality as well, is there's that, or you're just looking at the mechanical systems? Any testing involving things like that? You know?
Member Johnston, members of the board, I don't believe we're looking at doing specific air sampling or testing, but considering the design of the buildings, the intent of the systems, the, the compliance with ASHRAE standards, I guess by virtue of confirming that the buildings are continuing to operate per their design, that the air quality provided by those, and intended by those designs originally would continue to exist. We, we have other processes when we have indoor air quality concerns, where somebody's identified something that would suggest there's something going on in a building, and in those cases, we will contract separately for air sampling to determine whether or not there's, for example, a growth of microbial agents in systems within the building.
Thank you. Member Lefler Kemp, you had a question?
I was, I was just going to, Mr. Leiter, seeing I had a 15-hour drive, I had a chance to look at all the details of your report, and I just appreciated you going school by school and saying about, and, I guess, categorizing each of the areas that we looked at, so, appreciation for the details in the report you provided us.
Thank you, Member Lefler Kemp. Member Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Leiter, and we've had several conversations about indoor air quality, and I always appreciate those, and they're always good conversations, so I was just kind of following up on that. I have one other quick question here, as, that is in the Myers Wilkins. We've got exterior masonry walls, $350,000 for fiscal year 16, and fiscal year 17, $450,000 on replace existing windows. I, I could be wrong, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that at least the masonry repairs were part of the red plan.
We will check on that.
And, again, I don't recall exactly on the windows, but seems like a fair amount of major structural, I'll call structural work, or facility work, that I thought wouldn't be as needed this fast after the red plan has been completed for only a couple of years.
All right, we will... Mr. Leiter?
Member Johnston, members of the board, Member Johnston, you are correct, the exterior masonry repairs was one of the original work scopes in the long-range facilities plan, it was deferred throughout, in that process, and is, and it was needed, and it continues to be needed, so it is identified in this capital facilities plan. The window replacement was not, however, they are some of the oldest window systems in our district now, and even though they weren't included in the long-range facilities plan, we're, we're moving forward into those deferred maintenance tasks that, that still need to be addressed, and that is one of them for that building.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Mr. Leiter, I'm trying to remember, was this, was it deferred due to the soil work? The ashes, the ash that was found in the soil, and the amount of soil that needed to be replaced? Is that part of it?
Superintendent, members of the board, I, I can't say specifically, there's a lot of recall required for me to get into those details of specifically how, when, and where the deferred decision was made, but the amount of soil contamination certainly impacted our budget on that project, and we were looking at all of our projects overall and making sure that we were going to have adequate funds to complete the remaining two projects. So, I would have to spend some time to look back at the sequence of... projects. So, um, I would have to spend some time to look back at the sequence of conversations and the result of those to really comment further on how we got to where we are with that project.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Um, yeah, just getting back to the exterior walls again, and I always ask this question whenever I see the ten-year plans, uh, Mr. Lighter, so, um, on this one, is this included in that five million dollar additional that we talked about here about, about six months ago, that was gonna be a finishing of the red plan stuff, or would this be your additional tax levy money, alt facilities, or would it be coming out of the red plan money? Again, I think you've maybe answered some of these things in the past, but I always forget when you're, you talk about the ten-year plan, is when, and when isn't that part of, in this case, the red plan, plan?
Member Johnston, and members of the board, I, I would have to look at, um, the, the presentation that I made to the school board listing the, the scope of work. Um, I can't recall off the top of my head if it was listed in that remaining scope. Um, it is an alternative facilities qualifying, uh, scope of work, and so it would be paid for out of our alternative facilities, um, bonding or levy, and as there are some remaining bonding funds from the long-range plan, I guess I would have to look, look back to see where we put that and whether it was listed. And I can do that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Probably, it probably would be good in the future if you could, you could do that, and, uh, I don't know about these ones in particular, but, yeah, well, yeah, probably should. If it's easy, if it's a lot of work, give that to the superintendent to think if that's, uh, worth, this is work obviously we have to do, but just kinda curious, is this tying up some of the loose ends on the red plan as well as alt facilities, or will it be, uh, revenue, or, or, uh, levy revenue or what?
Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Westholm?
Uh, are we, well, maybe we're not done discussing this yet, are we?
We're gonna vote on it.
This is, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this?
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, has it been seconded?
So it's been moved, it was moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, and then, uh, five E, placeholder sale of property, I don't believe we had any sale of property this month, so that moves us on to six informational items, uh, expenditure contracts on page seventy-three, signed by Superintendent Gronseth, the Director of Business Finance. B, revenue contracts, same thing, on one-twenty-one, uh, signed by either of those gentlemen, and other contracts, none. And then we go to D, Facilities Management and Capital Project Status Report, and that's, uh, Mr. Lighter, both D and E, and contracts signed in relation to the long-range facilities plan. So I guess, any other comments you have or comments?
Move the business.
Okay, um, waiting to see if there's anything, yeah, okay. All right, so I move, uh, the, the, uh, business report for, uh, month of May, two thousand fifteen.
It's been moved by Member West, it's been moved by Member Westholm, seconded, um, by, uh, Member Murneke, I'm forgetting names now. Um, and then, so, no.
No.
No, my gosh, we're coming. All right, um, I wanna pull, uh, the school district elections and the placeholder B five fifteen thirty-two seventy. Um, Member Johnston?
Are we gonna do that now, or do you wanna ask other ones?
I'm asking, are there other things you wanna pull?
Okay, yeah, one B, one F, and, uh, two A, three.
One B, one F, and two A, three.
And, um, I had a, I had a question on property, I circled five E, but, uh, it's not really a question on property, but if it's.
Okay, so where, where directly would it be on the, the agenda?
I don't know, uh, five E then.
Okay. All right, we are going to first, um, discuss, um, bylaws, um, nine-one-one-five, the school district elections, this is the second reading of, of this, and just wondering if there are any conversations, if there was a robust conversation that we had last week, I know that when it came down to it, there, these are paired together, looking that we would be moving to, um, even numbered years, and that whoever is running for the next term would have a, whoever, this summer, running for this term?
Point of order.
Point of order. Um, point, one moment.
I think it needs to be moved and seconded and then have discussion, and then we can have a, uh.
Well, it's been moved and seconded as a part of the whole committee agenda, so it, it's just the placeholder that we would need to move in second separately.
All right.
Thank you.
I.
No, thank you. We're on bylaw, we're on three A.
Three.
Three A, bylaw nine-one-one-five, so it, it would be that the next term, for people running this summer, they would, they would have a three-year term, and then when the next term is up, they have a three-year term just to ensure that people are safe. We're not extending any of our terms or lessening any of our terms, it's setting forward so that we can move forward for this, um, to save some, uh, funding and for higher voter turnout. Mr. Hanson?
Uh, I guess, uh, first of all, I wanted to, um, preface, uh, the board's discussion of, uh, item three A, uh, bylaw nine-one-one-five, as well as your, uh, upcoming discussion, I presume, on item five C, the resolution, uh, with the transition plan in it. Um, by saying that, as we discussed at the, uh, uh, committee meeting, uh, the third element here of, uh, that has to take place is a change within the legislature to modify the existing laws on the books, uh, that stipulate when, uh, school district, uh, board elections are to be held. And I just wanna tell you that we were unable to confirm whether that was done at all in the flurry of things that got done here at the end of the session, and so I can't give you a definitive answer, uh, on that. Um, if something was, in fact, passed, um, to change that, uh, you know, then your, uh, potential actions tonight, and if you accept, uh, both of these items, then, you know, then we're, uh, in a position to make that change. Uh, if, however, the legislature through either what's happened already or through any subsequent special section, uh, special session, uh, does not deal with that item, then we're gonna, and if you would, um, pass item five C, uh, for the transition plan, um, I would have to come back to you in early June with a special meeting to have you essentially reverse that. So, um, I apologize that, um, I maybe didn't have a more clear, uh, explanation of, of all of that, but I'm hoping that you can hearken back to our discussion, uh, earlier discussion, and that those items make sense to you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Welty?
Um, what, what you've just said, uh, Mr. Hanson, uh, is a bit of a surprise to me and a little bit of a concern. I, I had said at the committee meeting that I wouldn't object, at least not very vehemently, uh, if we changed to even years if it didn't affect any of the current terms, but in terms of process, you've just suggested to me, to the board, that, that the, uh, one of the requirements must be that there is a, a, a change in the state law, I presume it's chapter twenty-one, House File Number one-four-six-seven, uh, that there has to be a change in that before we can make a change in Duluth. Now, I do recall, I was on the board in two thousand and three when, uh, Member Mary Glass wanted very much to reduce the size of the school board, and we passed a motion to that effect. However, uh, because of, uh, state laws that regulated Duluth, we had to go and ask the legislature to make that change so that we could switch over to, from a, a nine-member board to a seven-member board. Now, we have not yet acted on this policy change, and because we have not yet acted on it, because I have not had a chance to express whatever precipitous or otherwise objections to it, am I to understand that we have asked the legislature prior to approving this for changes in the state law to allow us to make this, or, uh, changes in state law that, that would do this? Did we get started lobbying on this already?
Member Han, Mr. Hanson?
I believe there were conversations with MSBA and possibly some of our local legislators. Uh, they weren't conversations that I had, so I can't really speak to that directly.
Member Murneke?
Okay, thanks. Um, we're contemplating doing this for a lot of reasons, uh, partly to save some money and partly to have the elections on even numbered years where there'll be a higher turnout. And it's the cart before the horse, the horse before the cart, you go, well, which way can we go first? And what you did was fine. You said, you know, it would allow us to change if we wanted to. If we decided we didn't want to, the point is moot. So if, if the legislature says, oh, no, not absolutely not, we're not gonna do it, then, then we stop here. But, but basically what we did is, we requested that we give the, we have the leeway to make the change if we so choose. I don't think it's presumptuous at all, I think it's just something that you have to do, and, and I'm very happy with this. If, if, uh, uh, we hammer this out and, and vote for it, um, the, um, and the legislature does not act on it, then we'll go back and we'll change it. It's, it's, it'd be quite simple, should be a very quick meeting.
Member Welty?
Well, I, I am alarmed that, uh, all of this seems to have taken place without the, the full school board, uh, realizing the, the direction of this. Now, if the change in the law does take place, if it did beat that flurry, and all it does is give us more flexibility as a school board to do it in the future, that's not perhaps quite as objectionable, but I can't say that I understood that we were in the process of lobbying the state legislature in our previous conversation, so I, as I said, I'm a little nervous about, about hearing that. Now, I would like to talk to the, do you want to, uh, give me some additional information about that before I proceed?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
If that's all right, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thank you, Member Welty. Um, I understood that it gave us a little bit more latitude if we wanted to make that change or not, and, and seeing that the session was finishing, that, that's what I understand from afar, but I, I'll pass that to Mr. Hanson. I just, I didn't.
I, I guess I.
It's giving more, like, again, it's, I thought it was more potential leeway from the legislature to go with what we would need.
Well, I, I will, I will want to have a history given to me if there has been a change, so I can see that it proceeded as, as, as Mr. Hanson has described, but if it, if it made a change predicated on the assumption that the school board has already approved this, that, that wouldn't be okay with me.
I don't, we wouldn't have done that.
Okay.
Member Hanson, Mr. Hanson?
Uh, I just wanted to remind board members that the discussion on, uh, this item of going to even-year elections was part of our, uh, discussion during our development of our budget considerations and investments. Um, and, uh, so that started either in January or early February, around then, and, and ultimately you passed that final list in its final form after a few other meetings, uh, in, uh, the middle of March or roughly thereabouts. So that, that's, uh, um, once that in, uh, consideration for budget reduction was passed, we were, you know, we've been moving to implement that list of items that you passed at that time.
Member Johnston?
Reading ninety-one fifteen, the way we have it here, which I believe is the second reading, if we pass that, and in fact, uh, the other resolution gets passed, this is, it's not compatible. So as a minimum, we have to table or go back and redo ninety-one fifteen, so it would at least comply with the resolution that we have. This talks about nineteen-seventeen, the way ninety-one fifteen is written, it means it starts immediately. And, uh, so we will have to go back, so I would certainly suggest that the, the board, uh, table ninety, at least ninety-one fifteen. I don't have any problem with the resolution, but, uh, we would have to change ninety-one fifteen, otherwise we'll just have to change it again, uh, next time when we pass this. So we should table it now and see if we couldn't get, um, get this changed, so that at least they both agree with each other.
Um, Member Johnston, I.
Mr. Welty?
No, Mr. Hanson, did you? Okay. Member Welty?
Yes, it does occur to me that, uh, you know, at this point, we're not contemplating a change that's gonna take place in the elections, uh, for, uh, for two, three, four years. And so, well, we, we might very well, so in other words, you know, we are talking about having a, a, an election this year that would be for a three-year term.
If there was latitude given from the budget, in, from the budget considerations that we had put forward, that, that put forward those talks, that would give us the latitude to make that decision.
Yes, that's right. All right, well, here's, here's a point I would like to make, and it's probably an elaboration over what I, I said, uh, at the committee meeting. Um, I won't kick a great deal about this, my biggest concern was that existing school board members' terms would, would change, and this, if it all works out, state legislation, uh, if we can get this done, it, it would not affect existing members' terms.
No.
And so that, which would have been a huge red flag to me, is no longer a red flag. I have mentioned the question of process, uh, I'd like to have a little bit more information on it. Um, but now I'm, I'm going to spend a little time talking about the, the thing I raised at the, at the, uh, school board meeting. Now, granted, we started talking about this as a budget item, the way of, a way of saying fifty thousand dollars, is it every, is it every year or every other year?
Per election.
Per election. Well, that's every other year.
Mr. Hanson?
I believe we, uh, we annualized the number into twenty-five thousand annually, which would essentially be then.
Yeah, so twenty-five thousand dollars here, which, I guess is nothing to sneeze at a court of a teacher. Um, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to move around with the, the notion of if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And twenty-five thousand is a pretty modest savings. And I do see one thing that I am concerned about, and the superintendent took my words and mischaracterized him in a certain sense. I, I pointed out that while it is true that many more people do come out to vote in these even-year elections, which are traditionally either an election in which a governor runs for office, or the United States Senate candidates show up, or the President of the United States, the public is inundated with tons and tons and tons of advertising. As a consequence, everyone is paying attention to the, the national level or the statewide level, and because so much money is thrown into these races, local issues can be lost. Now, there will be more people coming out to vote, but there will be people who would have to search high and low and spend an awful lot of time finding out what's going on in the school district with all the hubbub going on about the national races. So what you may gain in additional voters for this election that might make you very, feel very good that more people are voting for a school district, you, you also have people who are coming to the vote, to the polls, who may not have had an opportunity to have the school district issues laid out in the way that they would have in an odd-year election, we, which are quiet little elections, and do have a smaller voter turnout. And to the extent that you want to have people coming out to vote who are paying attention to your issues, the issues of the school district or the issues of the city council, you will lose something as voters who vote in those elections are swamped with information that's a lot more exciting on the national and statewide levels than locally. So I do think that you suffer, uh, people being able to, you, you lose the ability, or people lose the ability to find out what's going on in the schools because all this other information, uh, just is, is shot at them out of a, out of a cannon or a fire hose. So, that's my, that's my concern.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
A couple, a couple questions. Uh, Mr. Hanson mentioned our budget that had been, our preliminary budget, the recommendations from the board that were passed, it didn't include a fifty thousand dollar item for, I believe, next year, the coming fiscal year. Now, if we, isn't real clear, now, if we don't have, uh, the only way we could have savings is if, is if we didn't have an election. So that means that those budget recommendations that were put forth, at least that item, will not be in there anymore. not be in there anymore. Do we, as a board, have to make a resolution or an amendment to that? Because if it's in there and we're going to go through ahead and save $50,000, that means we won't have an election.
Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, when we bring the budget to you in June for your consideration and hopefully approval, we will provide a reconciliation of just what we were able to do on each of the consideration and investment items that were listed on that sheet. In addition, anything that's come up since then, and one of the things obviously is any changes from the legislature that we hear about. And we'll reconcile those things as best we can for, prior to your consideration of the total budget next month. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. I have one, as we're thinking about this and talking about this, it's lots of good discussion. Member Welty certainly had some good ideas here. We maybe not agree on that, but it did bring up another thought that I had, particularly goes down 9115, because we're changing school, we're changing the district to board elections. You know, to me, I think that is an oversight, at least on my part, because I would like to have all district elections, including referendums, being put on this, so.
Member Welty, one thing that we talked about in the committee, do you mind if I provide a point of clarification?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
I mean, I don't mind, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the pieces that they did talk about in the committee meeting, when we talked a lot about it, was that we don't necessarily tie everything to that we could, and actually, Mr. Hanson, can you say that more eloquently than I was about to?
Just to say that because referendums expire at different times, depending on, you know, how long they are approved for, and we also appreciate some flexibility in terms of possibly going out a year early to renew or ask for a referendum, the more flexibility we can have on years on the referendum side would be certainly preferable, and I think provides some advantages to the school board and the school district as a whole. And that's why it was, and the focus of your discussion as part of the budget was on school board member election time periods, and that's why it was focused that way, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Member Welty.
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Hanson. If we put a referendum on an election ballot, say if we did this in an odd year, would that cost us $50,000, or is that less expensive than a school board election to the district?
The allocation would be done with the city, or it's, well, let's just say it's done with whoever else is on the ballot, and the ballot is actually allocated in terms of, you know, column inches or lineal inches of the space on the ballot, so we would share that proportionally. So it would depend on how much space we had.
So it's a little bit like the old newspaper advertising, you pay by the space on the ballot in this case. So because it would just be one question, unless it was a very, very long one, it would be less than three or four candidates?
I would presume so, yes.
Okay. I'll just make one note, and then I think that'll be it for me, and that is that because we are contemplating holding two, three-year term elections on odd years to reach this, it's going to be, well, three years, isn't it, before we can start saving that $25,000? Because, so, the savings will be at some point in the future, not in immediate savings.
Making a decision now to invest in future budgets. Member Johnston.
Oh, sure. Getting back, don't we have to pretty much table or put off 9115 because of the dates?
Nope. As Mr. Hanson said earlier, if it hasn't been something that's been, that the legislature has given us some leeway on, we would come back for a special session in early June, so.
That was a resolution, I'm talking about the bylaw, bylaw 9115.
We can do the bylaw tonight and the placeholder, and then we would come back in June to do, if it weren't to pass, we would just reverse it.
Well, right now, it says if we pass this bylaw, it says even years.
Well, if you look at page 57, and we're not to this yet.
But that's a resolution, and these are two separate items, and I'm just asking, I don't have any real --
Mr. Hanson, I'm just going to, Mr. Hanson.
Did not turn up my microphone.
I'm just --
Please.
I've got it back on, I was trying to.
No, my thing is just trying to make, I don't have, really care which way we go here, as long as the, which I've heard here is good, but I just want to, it's silly to pass something if we're just going to have to change it again in a couple months.
But we may not have to if it made it through, because we haven't heard from the end of the legislature, Mr. Johnston.
Well, if we do even years, that means we would not have an election this year, according to 9115. That's, 9115 says even years, immediately effective when we pass it. And that would be in contrast or contrary, contradictory to the resolution.
Member Johnston, there's an implementation plan that's a part of the resolution, providing that school board general elections held after 2017 shall be held in the even-numbered years established in a transition plan. So the resolution gives the walkout for the bylaw, point of order for Member Murneke.
Yeah, it's built into the system. We're not going to, we're going to have the election in this November. We're going to have the election. It gives us, two things it does, well, no, then I'm not making a point of order, so I'm sorry about that.
Well, no, I mean, you don't have to get upset over that. I'm just trying to say that I don't, I'm not worried about if we're having an election, that's pretty clear. We are going to have an election this fall, I'm just trying to make it so we don't pass something which we're already in violation of, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Member Johnston.
And that seems like a fairly simple request, and I think we should delay this second reading until next month, so we can make it so it's not contradictory with the resolution, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Superintendent.
I think part of it is a timing piece, because if you wait until next month, you wouldn't be able to do it, because you have to have 30 days before the filing period. And so there's also the possibility that the omnibus bill may, you know, if it gets done in special session, if it didn't go through, then the special session would have to conclude with the resolution before that date, which I believe is 30 days before the filing date.
Member Welty.
I'd like to address my comments to Member Johnston. I've already determined that I will be voting against both the policy and the resolution. But I said, I wasn't going to kick about it too much. I've had a chance to ask a couple of questions here. But to Member Johnston, I would just simply say that we had a long discussion about the issue of the transition plan, and I was sufficiently confident in that conversation at the business committee meeting to think that, yes, we're changing the policy, our policy and mentioning these even-numbered elections, but that that was subservient in the next two or three elections, or the next two elections, to this change that we make, provided the state legislature makes the changes required for us to do this. And so we will have, in an interim period of time or a transitional period of time, we will have two, three-year elections on the even years, at which point this policy will be enforced in full, and we will start having even elections. But I'm reasonably confident that this could work out, and it's not a major threat in the way that I was worried that it was. I will vote for it, a vote against it, but since you have already expressed some interest in the even-numbered elections, I guess I'm encouraging you to go ahead and vote for it against my interest to keep things the way they are.
Thank you. And we are going to move, after this, we're going to, we've got to keep going, it's been a long night already. Member Johnston.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not worried about whether or not we're going to have an election, that's not my concern. My concern is here are bylaws, which are primacy when we come to policy. The bylaws take precedent over a resolution that we pass. We cannot pass a resolution that would violate our bylaws, we're not supposed to. And all I'm asking for is, a simple question, as it seems like if we pass this resolution and the legislature goes ahead and does this, that 9115, is we're going to be in violation of that, that's all I'm saying, that if, why don't we hold off on this policy so we can write it once and for all, so we won't be violating it? That's all that I'm asking, and I don't understand why we want to pass a resolution which we're going to be violating. We're not intending to violate it, but let's not pass something that if we're just going to be violating it. It's not our intention to, so let's not, let's not pass it until we can pass something that we won't be violating.
Member Johnston, we will not, we're going to move to, we need to vote on this, this is, we need to. Member Welty, can we move to vote on this? Can we, can we have the conversation after this? It's been a long evening.
It has been a long evening, but you know, I think we could just quickly, we could just quickly make a change to the policy.
This is nothing about this meeting has been quick, Mr. Welty.
Well, I do think that we could have altered the policy to just mention the transition, and that makes sense to me, and that we're not doing that doesn't make sense to me. I don't think there's anything nefarious in this, but, well, I guess we'll just wait and see what the legislature does. I'll vote against it, and who knows what will happen tonight.
We will be voting on this? Members, all in favor? Oh, no, this will be with the, so, are you hoping to vote separately on this then?
Yes.
Okay, we will have a separate vote on this. So a separate vote on bylaw?
B-15, 3270.
No.
No.
You're just talking about 3A right now.
We are on the bylaw, so for bylaw, 3A, 9115, all those in favor of changing this bylaw, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
No? The motion passes four to two.
Give me a second.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
She did.
Okay, we're good.
All right. Now we're moving to placeholder, B-5-15-3270. Member Westholm, will you please read that? Page 57.
Resolution, providing that school board general elections held after 2017 shall be held in the even-numbered years establishing a transition plan, and it reads as follows: Whereas the school board has previously determined that the school district shall, should hold its general election in November of the odd-numbered year, and whereas the school board now believes that voter participation would be greater and election administration easier if school district general elections were held in conjunction with state general elections in November of the even-numbered year, and whereas laws 1994, Chapter 6, 46, Section 26, Subdivision 1, provides that a political subdivision that initially chooses odd-numbered year elections and later determines to change to even-numbered year elections may do so by the adoption of a new resolution that contains an orderly plan for the transition. Now therefore be it enacted by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, school board general elections held after 2017 in Independent School District Number 709 shall be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of the even-numbered year. Two, the terms of office of school board members elected in 2015 will be for a three-year term to expire in January of 2019. The terms of office of school board members elected in 2017 will be for a three-year term to expire in January of 2021. The terms of office of school board members elected in 2018 will be for a four-year term and thereafter. The terms of office of school board members elected in 2020 will be for a four-year term and thereafter. Three, the school board shall notify the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, of its determination to hold its general election in November of the even-numbered year in 2018 and thereafter. And so I move that resolution.
I second.
It's been moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Member Murneke. We've had a lot of discussion about this. Member Johnston.
Yeah, we had that lot of discussion, but that's why we're here.
Which is good, I know.
It's all thank you. You were complaining about having a discussion.
I am not complaining about it, Member Johnston, I was making a comment. Thank you. Your comments, please.
Yeah, I bring up, and I hear what Mr. Hanson says, and I appreciate your concern about referendums, but I think that, I think this is an opportunity, if we're going to talk about having elections to increase voter participation, we have to include the referendums in all the elections we have. I think this is an opportunity. And granted, I hear what you're saying, we, you know, I'm not sure where all the numbers or the years fall, but it certainly seems like this would be an opportunity to us to make sure that all elections, including referendum elections and building projects for referendums, whoops, we don't have them here, do we? But normally, we would, that they would come on the even-numbered years, so I think this is an opportunity that I'd like to do. Normally, I was going to vote for this, but thinking about the referendum thing, I think it's the thing that we missed. I think that I'm probably going to vote against this, because I think that referendums really should be addressed, because that is probably our, probably the most influential thing. We get elected for four years, some of the referendums we pass may impact us for 20 years or 30 years.
Thank you. Member Westholm.
Yeah, the only reason I guess they would object to what has just been stated is that referendums and other special-type elections, they're often based on unique circumstances that may come up in odd-numbered years. And so there may be a circumstance where it might be best to do that, and so I would hate to see us get locked in on these types of elections to only the even-numbered years.
Thank you. We're going to move to a vote. All members in favor of Resolution B-5-15-3270, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes four to two.
Did you vote against it, Art?
Yes.
You did? Okay.
I, she, four to two. Yep. All right, back to item 1A B, or 1B, Member Johnston.
Oh, sure, just wanted to mention again here that our favorite attorney, Kevin Rupp, made another $26,000 last month, and with that, I will hold my comments until the next month, and after I receive my Data Practice Act request from January 29, 1915, I'm still waiting for, from the superintendent and Mr. Hanson, and I'll be able to make better comments on it. But just to remind everybody, it's been, I think, five months now since my Data Practice Act request.
Member Johnston, continue for 1F.
Waddams. Okay, again, we shouldn't have to bring this up, but we're at another low. Mr. Murneke can laugh about it when I bring it up, but we are at a new low, another 30 Waddams below what we've ever had before, ever in this school district. And we're 200 below the estimate that we started with. 200 is $2 million, that we were losing in state aid itself, and I know that some members think that's funny, but.
I wish you would quit inferring that.
So, Member Murneke, Member Murneke, Member Murneke? Thank you.
And I think that this is a very serious item, and that is something that, Waddam numbers, which is our enrollment for the school, for people that don't know, are continuing to go down. We've lost 280 this year, we're 200 below our estimate. We've lost 280 this year, we're 200 below our estimate, and that's a very, very serious problem, which I think is a responsibility of this administration.
Member, Mr. Hanson?
Board members, I just wanted to remind you that the forecast in February was basically the same as it is right now, being the shortage that Member Johnston reported, so it's, you know, it's been a similar number for several months in a row here.
Thank you. Member Murneke?
It's a very serious topic, and I resent any insinuation that I was laughing, I was not laughing. Mr. Johnston?
Gentlemen?
I was not laughing.
Gentlemen?
No, I would like to finish. I also firmly believe that the Waddam projections, and I went through this before, are not a fault of this administration, we can argue about that, but I don't think it's a fault of this administration. There are a lot of, and we've been over this, three years we've been over this, there are a lot of reasons for this.
Member Johnston?
Sure, what I was talking about was the enrollment. I realize that we are projecting, we don't know what the actual projected enrollment's going to be for ADMs, but just remind people that if you go like at the projected ADM, where I believe it's 8,200, yeah, that hasn't went down, but that's still a major record low.
All right, one other, your last piece held, the 5E, oh, second to last, Western Tennis Courts and Discus Civil Plan, by Member Johnston.
Yeah, I had a constituent ask me about this, and will these be open to the public?
Mr. Leiter?
Member Johnston, members of board, I, I'm certainly not in a position to govern exactly how they're going to be used. They will definitely be available to the high school for their physical education program, as well as their high school athletics. I would, they are capable of being secured, the nets and equipment can be left up, or they can be taken down. We have people that work in the building at the school during the summer hours, and there may be an opportunity to have those courts open and available to public during the time periods when the building is open, so that they can be secured afterwards. And beyond that, there may be some type of a joint powers agreement with the city that could provide different operating and supervision and management of those courts, so it's really quite open, and I think, build it and they will come, and we'll help to decide how to manage them properly once they're there.
Superintendent?
Thank you for mentioning the joint powers possibilities, and I think at the very least, it would be operated like some of our other facilities through community education, where people would reserve it, and that would be because of liability issues and the like.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Yeah, no, the reason I bring it up is because, just for that, and just really look into that, keep your eyes open, and I believe that there was even one topic on the Park and Rec Board, it was on the Laia Ensemble, there was discussion about, do they want to build more tennis courts, and then this one came up, well, will we be able to share our courts? So again, yeah, certainly keep working with the city on that, but it's certainly nice to be able to share those if we can, and hope it would work out. Just another quick question on that, is that going to take up the whole empty lot there? You know, there's been some other discussions about any possibilities of maybe selling some of that, just, will that...
Mr. Leiter?
I'm not asking for concrete, because I know we're going to talk about it, but will there be possibilities, say, to sell to the Urban Community Center, for example? They're one of the people that have been talking about that.
Mr. Leiter?
Member Johnston, members of the board, the, with the Discus throw landing area, shot put, and the tennis courts, it consumes, I'm going to say 90% or more of the property, and what's remaining is sloped, and, and probably deserves to be green space surrounding that, those functions. So I would not expect there to be surplus property that could be utilized, unless we abandon the Discus or shot put function, having a lower cost than the tennis courts as far as investment and construction.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Yeah, I'm not advocating one way or another, just it's a discussion which people have, so keep your eye on it, and when we get to that point, be glad, glad to enter into more.
And Member Johnston, your last was for the sale of property, you had a question. Maybe that was a part of the last one about sale of property, just selling for that potential, is that what you were bringing up?
No.
Oh, okay.
You know, again, we don't know yet, I don't think, about the status of our sale on Rock Ridge and Morgan Park. This is the request to the superintendent, Mr. Leiter, the Morgan Park people have asked, could, could the potential buyer come and discuss it with them? And I said I'd certainly talk to the administration and see if something could be arranged with the Morgan Park people. They haven't heard too much about it, they're certainly happy about it, but they would like to have a little bit of communication with the people, and I, and I know that the thing isn't all done yet, we don't have to talk about anything which is confidential, but if there's any possibility, I could talk to you afterwards, or the people there would just like to have a little bit of a heads up, and would like to get a communication or a relationship with the, with the developer, and their, and to give him kudos, and what can we do to help as a community?
Thank you. Mr. Leiter, if you could just please pass that along, that would be great, and we will... Okay. Mr. Leiter?
I just wanted to say that we, we do have a fully executed purchase agreement, and the details of that, that agreement have been made public and shared. As far as the developers' intent for having community conversations, I think at this point, my understanding is they're still exploring in more detail what, what their plans are, and at some point, I'm sure their intent is to, to bring that to the community, get some feedback from them, provide some input, but I think it's early in their planning process, probably too early to, to organize a meeting that's going to be meaningful at this time. And I'm, I'm speaking for them, but I certainly can't, our agreement doesn't require it, and the city process, unless it falls into the zoning or changes where there is defined city, or community meetings, I don't know when one would occur.
And I guess I would echo what Member Johnston's sentiments, that we are continuing to encourage this buyer to have an open and transparent process with his building, construction. Seeing no other lights, I, we will vote on the business committee, agenda, business committee report. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's five to one, and there are no special resolutions, and so we will move to adjourn tonight.[1792.58][1792.58]